Join in fudge and business supply.
I believe it is the violation of the United States of America. And to the revolt for which she stands, one invasion, media business law, never she addresses her.
Thank you very much. This is Rancho. So we're here to town council meeting December seventh, twenty twenty five. Uh, we do have a forum and councilman person some place is out of town. So. Um. I would like to before we approve the joint, I'd like to add to the agenda of the new business site number seven holiday schedule.
I didn't print it.
We can still do it. Just prove the days off.
We can do it.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Strike that. Okay, so approve agenda as published.
So.
Move with Jessica.
Okay.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mission carries. Three little minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty five meeting.
I may make a motion that we approve the minutes from November fourth, twenty twenty five. Second.
You know, we're seeing one Jessica. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Most of us. Public comments from the guests. Do we have anybody? Have any comments? Anyone? Yes. Please state your name.
This isn't a speech. It's just a list. Um, my name is Kathy Stephen. I lived in this area, community about thirty years and twenty seven of that I've lived here in. I was employed by the town of Ranchester for going on nineteen years before I returned. And this is probably a little different than what you might expect. But I'm, I'm here to say an overdue thank you to the council, the mayor, the town staff. We all have had different reasons why we have moved to the town of Rancho. When we moved here, um, a number of years ago. It was mainly for the school system. We have, we had heard that it was a very good system. We had two daughters that were school age. We were in the area. We decided to get closer. Those are the reasons. People move here for family. They move here for the beauty. They move here for a job. That is within driving distance of Ranchesters. There's just a lot of different reasons, but. The one thing that I took for granted when I moved here. Um, I didn't think about, do I have fresh, safe, clean water to drink? I just figured I'd turn my tap on. And I would have good water, which I did. And I didn't think when I moved in about the sewer system, that it was in good running order and that my health was gonna be. Same, same with garbage pickup. I just came over here to sign up for an account and I was told once a week. You have your garbage picked up. And it is, it always is. And in light of that. When you have those services, there are things that are tabs to them. Meaning you have to have a reliable. Vehicle, meaning a garbage truck. You have to have reliable equipment. To keep all of that stuff running correctly. You have to have people in your water department. That are trained and they know how to keep you safe. That is a life sustaining event to have good water. And again, I took that all just in stride. I just assumed when I got here that it was all well, which it is. And it still is today. Um. This list, I was gonna talk about it towards the end. Um, I'm not going to read through it. If you want a list of it, the town engineer will have it available. I just saw the visible stuff that is happening in the town of Ranchester. I saw a new roof. Being replaced on the medical center over here. I saw the streets being improved. I saw what I assumed was something going on with the water department. There was, there was digging going on for an upgrade. Um. I just saw like four or five things. This list has thirty plus things that just happened. In the background that nobody really knows about or asks about. And chooses to complain about instead that we're either spending money. Or that we're doing something that isn't um actually necessary. Um. At the time I started here, or in light of that, with all that stuff happening, when you get a new garbage truck, you have to do research. You have to get funding sources. You have to find out what's the best one for our town. And I know that all happens. When I was hired here, I was the second office person. There was one basically running this town. As far as billing and all the work now, that was two people. Twenty four late years later from the first year I started, you still have two people. That do everything in this office. There's, there was no online payment available. Um. Quick backstory, I'll take as short a time as I can. I worked for an electric company for eight years. When I applied and was accepted and offered the job, I went, what? If I just then. Cause in my mind, I thought I would be bored here. All I have to do is smile when somebody comes in, which these ladies do. And all I have to do is answer the phone and answer the few questions. I had no clue what was coming. By the end of that week, I was almost in tears for a whole different reason. I had so much to do, so much background work that had to keep going and happening. We had no computers at the time. And I thought, I can't do this. I cannot get my work done in eight hours. When I thought I was gonna be twiddling my thumbs, just smiling when people walked in, I found out different. So I'm thanking the office staff for that. They have either a smile in their voice when I call over here, or a smile on their face when I walk in the door. And they take the time to listen. And I had to be interrupted a hundred times a day for people asking me questions. That's what you do. That's part of your job description. And I thank them for that as well. Um, start with the mayor. Um, he's well versed in what his job is. And keep in mind, his job is part time. But he is here alone. He's available or the, or the office people find him. And to make him available. He researches, he goes to informational meetings. He's, he's a quiet man. He knows, he knows the ordinances. He knows the statutes. And knows how to uphold them as best as he can in a small town. And that should be appreciated. There's some mayors, I'm talking way into past. I knew I had a mayor for a short period of time, could never find him. I couldn't get him on the phone. I couldn't get him to sign checks, nothing. And I appreciated when Peter was hired. That um, I had somebody I could depend on and that he knew the job and he knew it well. Same with the council. I'm assuming when they don't vote on something unless they're informed. About it. If you make an uninformed decision, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt one person. It hurts the whole town. And I saw that happen time and time again. Um, so again, I'm thanking the council as well. As far as the staff goes, law enforcement. We have one person in that department. He cannot work twenty-four hours a day. But I'm assuming that he's either on call or that he sets it up to someone else in Sheridan, wherever. But we can't expect him to be in everybody's car in the town every minute of the day. It's not usually possible. To work that many hours. So I thank Spencer for that. I don't see maintenance here. Maintenance keeps our street safe. I used to get a number of calls, how come you, how come you plowed the snow that way? How come you did it on my street like this? How come you didn't do the main street? Because the main street is, is the hydrant park. That is not a town street. And I had to explain that a thousand times. And I think. Marlene was shaking her head a bit. Yes, it does happen. And we have to just quietly explain to people. You have to appreciate your town staff. I just really wish you would to take that time. Cause I'm on and about. I'm at the school. I volunteer up at the school. I know a lot of people from my church. I know. I hear complaints all the time. And I don't know why. Because they do the best they can. For what they have to work with. In this town, the grounds look great. Bob is always out with, they're always busy. They, you know, they're mowing lawn, they're picking up trash that they see, they're picking up branches. Every department in this town knows their job. Another quick story about water. Two years ago, I had a water line break at my home. It was cold. It was below zero. It was dark. It was the end of the day. And Gary, your water person, probably had just got home. Had just got ready to have supper. And I had a lake in front of my house. So I had to call him. I said, Gary, I'm sorry to call you back. But I said, I have a mess going on here and there's a lot of water. He, he just said, I'll be there as soon as I can. And he was. And all he had to do was bring his curb key and shut my curb stop off. And turn it on and go home. But the fact that he did it was amazing. You know, he just. It was terrible. Whether it was windy, it was everything. And he came out, shut it off so I could have a private person come and fix it. And then the next day, he came over and turned it back. So it's just, I don't know. Um. There's a lot of future growth there. I've seen. Seven hundred people and so back from, I guess somewhere like that. And now there's like fourteen.
No, no, of course, I'm good.
We've, we've seen a lot of development. You can't stop the growth. If they, if they follow the guidelines and Will, our engineer, follows the guidelines and. If they, if everything is in order, they're doing what, what is legal and right. You can't stop growth. However. When that growth happens, things have to go with it. You have to develop more. Stuff. Water, um, gotta make sure your water supply is good. Your infrastructure is good, all that kind of stuff. And he takes the time along with the planning commission. To make sure that this town, this is a healthy town right now, that it grows healthy. And that it looks nice and that we can be proud of it. And I know I'm going on and on, but I just feel like it's important for people to know. You do not have to complain. If you're not sure about something, coming ask them. They will have an answer for you. And I don't mean just you can care. I just mean in general, for the whole public, for the whole town. Um, I'm not, you know, I'm not dealing with any financial questions because I don't have answers to you. But I do know who does. And all you have to do is come in and talk to them instead of saying, did you know? I have had people come to me that asked, I've been retiring now for five years. That still come to me once in a while and ask me a question. And I went. I, I can't tell you that anymore, but you can go to the office. And there are people that do not want to do that because they want to continue to be angry. Or they want to continue to not be satisfied with the question that they have because they want to be able to. Go back out there and say, did you know? This thing. Um, the water is constantly tested. We have family daughter that's moved in. I use it a couple of days a week at least. We've had the option of natural gas coming. That stuff just doesn't happen. In five minutes, the mayor doesn't make a call and say, let's, let's do natural gas. It takes, it typically years. Get that developed and, and get going. And they were still talking about it before I left. Um. It just takes time. And I just wish everybody would appreciate the fact that you have a good. Um. Honest, hardworking staff that only does things for the benefit of this town. They have no agenda that I'm aware of to do anything different. So anyway, I just said thanks.
Thanks, Council.
Thanks, Kathy. Um, Mayor Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do want to make a distinction though. Here tonight, I am not the mayor of Dayton. When I come here, I don't come here as the mayor of Dayton. I come here as a taxpayer, a businessman of two thirds of my lifetime. Uh. Over here on Main Street. That has since ended as of September seventeenth, but. I wanted to address something that happened back in September. I apologize for being three months late almost. I've been out of town. Uh, there was a homeless guy living over here on Railroad Street. For about two weeks. And my grandkids and two other kids live over on Railway Street. And I didn't like that guy. Living in such close proximity to my grandkids. And so I stopped by here one day and lo and behold, there was another man who was the grandfather of the two other kids. Talking to the sheriff, marshal, and the mayor about the situation. We were told. That he could pretty much stay wherever he wanted to. So. Some vigilante, which is me. I took it upon myself, went over and talked to the gentleman. Young fellow, nice. And I, I told him just what the marshal said. After I told him that he couldn't stay there. I said, you're not staying here. But there's a, there's a, I've been told that you can stay pretty much anywhere you want to, but I'm not gonna let you stay here. So I took him down to a shady place in town. Further away from the railroad track, which was, happened to be down in front of Spencer's house. Uh, because it's, it's shady down there in the evening. And it's further away from railroad track. It's quieter. Well, I and this other grandpa were standing out there talking. And lo and behold, a black Chevy truck pulls up behind this gentleman because he moved. He went down parking for Spencer's. And uh. Three minutes later, five minutes later, that guy was gone. And I, I want to know why he was moved from that spot. When he had, when he was okay to camp over here for ten days. Why was he moved from down there? Can anybody tell me that?
Thank you for your comments.
Well. We all knew who owns a black Chevy truck around here. And the double standard really upsets me. Thank you. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mayor Reed.
I'm not the mayor.
Representative Raff, do you have anything? Of course.
Just happy to be here in Branchester uh tonight. I know what's going on in the town. I um, I'm not gonna go into details, but I. Have been running some numbers um. Based on just the information from last year, the uh sixty sixes that were. Um, that you always submit on time to the Department of Audit and they appreciate that. So. Um, and just impact any, uh, any changes we'll have. So I'm looking forward to meeting with you and going over those numbers. Um, thank you very much.
Sure. Well, thank you for coming. Charles, are we having anything?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, old business ordinance three oh six. And chapter five dash five, F one eighty-five, camping prohibited on public streets and properties, third re, third and final reading. Non-retainer motion to pass on third reading, ordinance three oh six.
Make a motion to pass ordinance three oh six, camping prohibited on public streets and. I'll set him.
Who by second, by Jessica's second, by Amber. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I voted for this twice. Uh, because. Private business. As you look around the country, it's a problem with people. Distracting from private business. And that's not right. But uh, in lieu of what happened in last week, I won't support this time. Yeah, because I think this will give abuse. And I, I, the wording should be different. Montana is very interesting about the government. We talked about all the services in that and um. Like decides about the interstate that they can't find things to put on. There were about seven hundred thousand apiece. Montana has a bunch of them between fifty and a hundred thousand little ones. And it says on there, so don't drive drowsy, take a nap. And I went by about five or ten of them the other day. And I'm just coming back. And uh, you know, I'm just not as spry as I used to be. I used to be able to really go. Some days I get tired at four o'clock. I used to bring my daughter home, go ahead and hide and give her, drive back to work. Every day because she couldn't drive due to the health concerns, health problems. You know, I would get drowsy between Sheridan and Ranchester almost every day at four o'clock. It just happens, but I push through. But on some of these bigger trips, it's a little more difficult. So there night, and I traveled my life. That's the one blessing. We don't make a lot of money, but we traveled together. It's an enjoyable thing. Raised eight children together. We homeschool to teach Bible principles. And I feel, still believe that's what's gonna save our country is going back to that. If you go back and look at the law, the Supreme Court, the ruling said this was a Christian country. That's what held us together for years. And it's more difficult for a woman to travel. And it was after dark in West Yellowstone is uh, this time of the year pretty shut down. And I got drowsy. And when it's shut down, there's no place for a woman to relieve herself decently. And there is a park there with open rest, Julie. And I pulled in there and I told her, I said, I need forty-five minutes to know. And you know, just, I never let the car run because that's my alarm clock. So you figure you're warming up hot, you can't stand it. By the time you get cold, it's about forty-five minutes. And I thought maybe I was having a revelation. My wife hit me because there's lights all over the place. And lo and behold, in this big park, there's nothing there. It's the town officer rousting me. Telling me I couldn't be there. And he was nice about it. Told me we have an ordinance. And I said, well, I just can't push through right now. I'm tired. He said, well, you can go down the road ways, or you can go back over that one. And I said, well, you know what? Since they passed that DOT thing for truck drivers, them spots are made for semis, not really for me. He said, well, I'm sorry. I still drove off. He probably wouldn't let me sit there because he knew I was not a threat. But I drove off and then I just went. Um, you know. I don't agree with camping on public streets. I don't, I don't think homeless should be there. Likewise, saw in LA and I saw in Vegas this year. But in the same token. Sitting in your car for two to five hours, you might not be feeling well. I've traveled a lot in my life and um, I've been sick where I've traveled and. It takes sometimes two to five hours to get feel better to push through. And, and I think that this will be abused in that fashion. So I'm gonna be voting no on this.
Thank you. Any more comments? Any more comments? All in favor, ordinance three oh six, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Let this pass. Summary of economic development plan. There you go. That's it.
Uh, thank you. I'm Mr. Mayor and we're, um, I think I'm gonna ask for some help to kind of manage up my laptop here for reference. Um, so uh, my name is Mike Trolle, and I'm there, social speaker, consultant of the campaign by. The towns that helped build the economic growth strategic plan and the parks plan. The parks plan is fully forthcoming. I think we're, we're just finishing that up. So that will be, we should be receiving that shortly. Um, but I'm here to talk about the. Technologies. So, um, but I'm here to talk about the economic development. So if you want to move on to the. Agenda, just real quick, I'll, I'll go through kind of the background, the methodology. The purpose, um, and so gotta go through some of the existing conditions. And then we'll go through the recommendations and then if there's any questions. Um, obviously here to answer them. So if you want to go to the next one. So the, the, really the background purpose is to help value the public decisions. Um, and investments over the next five to ten years and foster sustainable economic growth. And really try to enhance the, the local quality of life. I think you have a really nice. Community out there with a really nice quality of life and kind of keep and maintain that and grow that. I think this will be really important. Um, I, I do want to point out one thing as it relates to economic development. It's just one of the things that kind of colors some of the, the findings. Um, when you kind of say economic development, you say kind of why do you do it? You know, why? And, and, and every state or every community, it's a little bit different. In Wyoming, really the big issue, um. It, it's residential, maintaining a residential population. So that you can sustain your local revenue to support the investments you need to make in your community. To maintain that quality of life and to maintain everything that you've been able to do over the years. Um, so that's really important. In other states. That are more dependent on property tax or retail sales tax and, you know, I think it's less important. But in Wyoming, you're very unique in the sense that. That economic development is really tied uh to your residential population and that residential growth and those. Transfers you get from the state, um, you know, to, so that you can kind of maintain, uh, uh, maintain your, your quality of life. So if you want to go to the next. Um, so as far as methodology goes, you know, we take a multifaceted approach. We, we collect data. Um, you know, we, but what we like to do is kind of look to the data is telling us, come into the community and kind of confirm it with our eyes. And we want stakeholders. To kind of understand what's actually happening and try to understand kind of what are those little unique nuances or different things that are occurring here locally. Um. We did engage with different stakeholders, the state, the state, the economic development partners, the, the regional county travel tourism. We met with some local developers and different local stakeholders, property owners and business owners. And worked to kind of identify the strengths and those, and the opportunities uh, uh, here in, in, in Ranchester. So throw over the next one. Um, just a couple of things that these, there's a, a lot of numbers you can pull from a report, but there's just a few that, that um. We'll highlight here in the presentation. You have a seventy-seven percent labor force participation rate. That's well above the national average. That actually indicates, uh, I think is, is uh correlates with your median age of thirty-four point three. Um, typically, you know, when you have younger population, um, with more kids, you have a higher, higher labor force participation rate. Um, which means a lot of people earn money, um, or, or earning money, which is good. Um, the, the median household income of sixty-five thousand is a little bit below, it's below the state average. It's not low. I, I want to be careful about how I characterize it. It's not, you're not a low income, but you're just below the state average and you're below. Kind of slightly underneath the county, um, and, and shared. And though, if you look at the mean. The mean household income is quite a bit higher, but that's just, it's a distortion in the statistics because it probably just tells me that you've got a few people that are really, really wealthy. Here that kind of distort that, which I'm sure you're not surprised to see that. Um, uh. Your population is, uh, you know, you, you've had kind of modest growth. And I think what, what, from what we've seen. And what in our discussions with state and the model for different sources, you're probably likely to kind of continue with some modest growth. Over the next five to ten years. Um. Your top employment, your sector is healthcare, social assistance at around third, about a third. Um, most of your, about fifty-five percent of your population go to Sheridan for work, which I'm sure. Is not surprising. About another third go to other points, kind of in the county outside. There's only about four percent. Of your population actually live in Ranchester and work in Ranchester. So. Um, so people are leaving your bedroom community. And I think we had that discussion with a lot of folks in the community. It's that we enjoy. We want to be a bedroom community. We want to be the best bedroom community. And I think there's absolutely nothing wrong. It's a good thing. Um, and uh, you know, given the fact you have a really good school district, I'm not surprised, you know, you've got, it's very attractive for young families. Um, I talked about the kind of regional connections with the proximity to, along I ninety and. Sheridan, I know they're making big investments in an industrial park. Um, guessing they're probably gonna be looking at data centers. That seems to be the big, big thing right now in the state that they're investing in. Um, uh, and uh. So, so I imagine that that may be a driver from the point. I'll talk a little bit more about that in one of their recommendations as well. Um, and uh. The utility infrastructure that you have here, I think it was sent to, the, the, your, your resident who spoke earlier, I think spoke very. Uh, about your, your utility and actually the service, which is really good. So, so I think that, that's uh, um, good. But you do have. I will say the one thing, you're, you do have a very young population. You're well below the state national hours, that median age of thirty-four point three. Um, and so, you know, like I said, it's a, you've got a lot of people that are coming here. Um, for the school district or for the, the school, the education and for the quality of work. So let me go to the next one. So I'm gonna shift gears, I'm gonna talk about the different recommendations and really quick, we, we, we. We put them in three different buckets and so the, I'm gonna go through kind of the, uh, the highway corridor plan. Um, the invest in, in pro, the property investment, which is the second one, and then the third one relates to housing. So I'm gonna go through all three of those, those kind of general buckets and we do include kind of more detailed information. And recommendations or things you could do, um, for, for each of those, so. Um, the first one, you know, develop a highway fourteen corridor plan. Um, you know, the, you're the front door, uh, the, in, you know. One of the things that observations that I had when I came here is there's no sense of arrival when you get to Ranchester. You kind of come over braves, you don't really know, you know, when you go to Sheridan, they've got the big signs that kind of are over the highway, you kind of know. You're in Sheridan, it's different, I know they're a little bit bigger, but when you have people that are coming through and you're dependent on. To some degree on tourism to help support your retailers and retail market. It's important that you kind of present that sense of arrival, because once, if you have this sense of arrival. It encourages people to stop, it, it tells it's a visual signal that hey, this is a place where stopping and spending some money. Um, because I think one of the challenges that you have, uh, when we talked to a lot of, we, you know, we had the community discussions and stakeholders, it was. You know, hey, we really like kind of a grocery store, we like a sit-down restaurant, we like these other retail opportunities. I can't overcome the market with like a plan, as much as I wish I could. Um, you have a thousand or so people for eleven hundreds of population. Um, you know, and that, you know, in terms of retail opportunities, it's really limited by your population, that's not, that's everywhere. Um, and so, you know, to, you have to really, for those businesses to be, to, to thrive and to grow, you need to. Lay ear on those, to the extent you can, those uh, tourism opportunities. Capture the people that are driving through as much as possible. Um, the one thing, you know, in discussion with Will and, and uh. You know, you're coming up on a six-year planning cycle with the Wyoming DOT, and so the idea was. Prepare, you know, understand what that ask is going to be to the state, you know, and they're gonna come through and, and look at the kind of uh. Those investments, the things that they want to make along highway fourteen. What is your community value? What, you know, what do you want to see them do? Um, and I think a lot of what we heard, and you could go to the next slide too, they're both uh. A lot of what we heard, uh, was that walkability and safety, you know, when I came through. Um, one of the things I observed, which I thought was really wonderful, was you saw kids walking down the street riding their bikes. That's a great thing, you don't see that in a lot of communities, um, as much as I think, at least when I was younger. Um, and I think, uh, but, you know, seeing kids cross, have to cross the highway. Um, and go through sidewalks that, that are, are, um, that are kind of uneven, um. I think that's presents some challenges and I, and, and so kind of thinking about that walkability, the foot traffic. Um, we did talk to some businesses that, you know, they said, hey, we'd really like, you know, if you could cross the street. Go to their business and come to our business and, but it's just hard because, you know, you're on highway. As much as, you know, you can manage the, the speed through signage. Um, you know, people are gonna drive, you know, a straight wide road, people are gonna drive. Uh, people just tend to drive a little bit faster, so, so I, I think thinking about that is important. Um, you know, and creating kind of a consistent visual appeal as you go through Ranchester. We, we did a few within the plan. Some kind of concept design, you know, for you to look at. This one is, as you kind of come in off the highway and you go over the bridge. Um, you know, to kind of, to, 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 you know, again, it's signal, hey, I'm in Ranchester now. Um, you know, this is a community and, and, you know, kind of worth stopping in, so just kind of thinking about. Um, you know, what that might look like, uh, and, and we, we included those really to help stimulate some of your ideas and thinking around what it could be. And, you know, obviously coming up on this next planning cycle, I think it's important. We also included one on the other side of the, by the school coming in. Uh, a, a kind of a concept that's a little bit similar to what they have in Sheridan with the one that goes on the street. Um, so, so that, that's the first uh, area. We'll go to the second one now, if you want to go to the, um, drive targeted redevelopment along the corridor. Um, the one and two are kind of the, they're, they're related. Um, you, you do have. I will say, you know, the other kind of unique thing about Wyoming is you have, they're limited. Um, to, uh, box of tools you can use in terms of kind of incentive. And that's part of, I, you know, that's part of, you know, written into the Wyoming state constitution, it is what it is. Um, so I think you have to think about different ways to approach it, different, um. Different kind of indirect kind of ways to assist kind of businesses and enhancing your infrastructure to help draw tourists. Um, the, and, you know, looking at kind of what are the, the, the underutilized to bacon properties where you can kind of start. To think about what, what you could do, if you go to the next, next one, next slide. Um, I, I think looking at those infrastructure and corridor improvements will be really important, and it's kind of how we, the. Public spaces relate to the private spaces, because I think it's important, I think typically, you know, private investment will follow public investment. Um, so I think thinking about that will be important. Um, there are opportunities for technical assistance with Wyoming DQ. Um, for buildings, for uh, uh, assessments, for redevelopment planning. That's available to private businesses or property owners that are concerned if they, if, if they have. Any environmental conditions, I know you have a few buildings that, that may qualify, um, but it's a really good program to help. Um, uh, property owners kind of get a better sense of what are the environmental conditions on those buildings and look at opportunities. To do some economic development planning. I know, I'm very familiar with that because our firm, we do a lot of work with EQ around some of those dollars, so. So I think that that's, um, that's something worth looking into, uh, going forward. Um, I think, uh, market Ranchester strategically, I think to, you know, if you think about how you relate to some of the tourism. The, the tourism groups, you know, we had conversations about them with the, the Sheridan, the regional, uh. You know, obviously you are a national, a lot of people come here. Um, and will continue to come here and kind of think about how you fit in and be, to actively participate in those, those efforts. So that you can kind of, to the extent, you know, great extent captures those, those tourism dollars from, coming in. Um, there's also the, kind of other things we go, go into a little bit more about adaptive reuse and phase development. Looking at your rent of the tour environment and what you allow, I mean, that's something that, you know, in every community, you've got. Building and land use codes that you can, that you can kind of work with to make sure that you're, you're, um. You're, you're, uh, um. Reflecting kind of what that market demand is. I think generally you do a pretty good job, at least put in a promote a business friendly environment. I think I would say more to remind you to keep doing that, not to tell you to do it, because every business we talked to, I think, said. You know, almost kind of unanimously that, hey, the, the, the town is really great to work with, staff are really great to work with, so. So I, I think we put that in there. Not, you know, not, it's more as a reminder, I think, to kind of keep doing what you're doing, because I think it's really, that, at least that part of it is working really well. Should we go to the next one? Thank you. Um, so the third one is to kind of expand housing development to accommodate some growth. Um, you have the, your, your, your housing stock is primarily single family, you do have some rental. Um, it, it's a little bit below kind of average of mix, um, but it's not the, um. But I think, thinking about, you know, having those opportunities, particularly, um, for older populations too, because one of the things. That happens, we, I've seen this a lot in smaller communities, um, as you, as you age in place, or as you, as you age. Um, can your kids move on, your kids move out, um, you, you know, you, you don't want to. You, it's hard to move into downsized, um, because there aren't that many opportunities, particularly for senior housing, so you. So older seniors tend to stay in housing longer, which kind of chokes the supply for younger families that are coming in and that want to buy. Um, and, and so kind of having some senior housing a, a, available, I think is, is important. I think you're doing some of that. Um, so looking at kind of diverse housing options, um. And, uh, and again, I think I do want to reinforce the fact that. Your local tax revenues are heavily dependent on state transfers that are based on population, so. Maintaining your population and being able to look at different areas that are, are o- opportunities for hesitation. Where you can actually add some housing and I think will be really important. If you want to go to the next one. The other thing, um, I, you know, I, this came up kind of during our, our engagement, the, you know, the mine that's potentially opening not too far away. Um, I think it's, it's important to kind of look at that and anticipate what's gonna happen. You know, if that goes forward as planned or if, if, based on the vision that we're putting forward. Um, you know, my guess is that, and, or so say my professional kind of observation is. If you're gonna open a mine and start employing a lot of people, you end up with the, the people that are very temporary. Um, and you're gonna, you know, your RV parks, you're gonna have people that are, are doubling up, that are looking at hotels or different, you know. The people that are working in the mines, um, so just, I, so I think kind of anticipate, you know, if that does go forward. You know, that if you're, it's gonna have an impact on your community, um, because I'm sure that people will want to, because you're pretty close. Um, they'll want to live kind of here where there are some services and some reason. Um, so, so thinking about that will be important. So, so those, those were the three. Um, my contact information is there, but thank you. Uh, I think we really appreciate the chance to come up, you're all very welcoming and, and I'm here to, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Do you have, anybody have any questions for?
What is the role of government, a free country to, to do this? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I was in America here right now and I think I'm in a. Socialist country. The opportunity is what makes it work. You come off the mountain, they stop in Dayton first, you're on the interstate, you already stopped in Sheridan, they've already spent a few million dollars and billions over here. Family dollar came in by itself. Have you ever been to Shoshone, Wyoming? Uh, I have not. The one point four million cars travel through that every year, it's a dive. They put one big grad, one big rich guy bought all the gas stations, I'll put this really nice fast stop in it, cool gas station. But this isn't about the government, seeing which money they get, this is supposed to be about opportunity in a living place. I mean, that's, I don't get this. Ever been to Bayonne, Utah?
No.
Right now it's about two thousand people. In the summertime, it's twenty-five thousand. They don't have to do anything, it's a lake there. And they have a, how old is that, rent between two and four thousand a night? They don't even have to even do anything. You ever go up to, uh, Priest Lake, Idaho?
No.
Thirty-five thousand people in the summertime. Probably about twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred in the winter time, same, same city area. The opportunity has to be there. You ever go to Grayville, Wyoming?
I've been to Grayville.
They're struggling on their main street, if you look at that, they had a really nice story in Main Street. You know, you put flowers and stuff up, what is the government's job in that? To take taxpayers' dollars to do that? We have people, you're talking about retired people and other taxpayer dollars go from that. Grayville, Wyoming has a cement factory, they have a nice hardware store, they've got a grocery store, they got two parts houses, they're only four hundred people more than us, really. But they're struggling on Main Street, why? Because really as American, as Americans, we're going to, uh, well, when I was a kid, you went twenty miles. You thought you went across the country. Now they'll drive three hundred miles to go shopping, it doesn't bother them. And so that's gonna be what it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be private enterprise. You right now, Dollar General, you gotta go through the southern part of Wyoming here, there's one in every town now. Every town has it. Did the government put them in? No. There has to be opportunity for that. And so, uh, guilty economic, I mean, you gotta have economic opportunity. What I see here is opportunity economics, this is Kamala Harris. We're, we're gonna take the government money and, and force things, and that's not the government's job. Government's job is supposed to give us freedom, government's job is supposed to give us streets and roads we pay taxes on and supply a place for us to do business at. But we start putting up a bunch of signs and waste a bunch of money. I mean, you think that sign brought people in, it shouldn't, no. I see it all over. When one place does it, they do, have you ever go to Urica, Utah? They put fancy lights up like we do everywhere else, and guess what? There's nothing in there, it's a goose town. The, the town next to them used to have a, a big grain factory in, in processing plant, same thing, they put big fancy lights up. Guess what, you'd be the only one driving through that town. You can put all the money into that town, you want the government, if the opportunity isn't it. But twenty miles away, you get close to interstate and poof. And that's what this is, this is the interstate here. And, and for that to stop here, but like I said, they've already hit Sheridan, when they're coming down for billions, they're going to Sheridan, when they come off the mountain. Dayton gets a lot of the people that we don't get because they're first after a long drive. So that's up to private business to try to fall into. Waldrug, South Dakota is proof of that. There's nothing there. Just family members. And I stopped there all the time, my kids and my family, because we used to sit there and, and have a meal and just sit there, there's nothing there. That is done by private enterprise, and you know, I see that a lot of people are going there. But now look at Shoshone. They're putting in brand new sidewalks right now. They ain't gonna do anything. So that's the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Colonel, counsel. Thank you. Good, any others? Anyone else?
For your work comment.
Cool, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, holiday day for staff, um, traditionally we give a, uh. A, a token of our appreciation to the town police who do a lot of work for us, after hours on, on call. Um, without. Without much great weight and, uh, last year we gave them, uh, uh. A sign of gratitude, five hundred and fifty dollars. And less than that, that's after taxes, so it's a little bit more than that, but we, we account for the taxes coming out, so we actually get a five hundred and fifty dollars. So. I would, um, indicate emotion to continue that tradition.
Someone?
Let's go. There's a second.
I'll step in.
You might remember, so any, any discussion, any discussion?
I'm really not for this. This isn't a private business, these are servants, just like I am most of my life. And, uh, I think they're compensated well, I think more than I do, and they work four days a week. Um. This isn't our money to give away. These are taxpayers here, and so it's not ours to say what we're going to do bonus for, and I'm not for it.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor of, I mean, five hundred and fifty dollars to the town employees? Say aye. Aye, and I oppose?
Aye.
Sure carries. Um, because of scheduling issues, the first week, uh, in January, we need to. Tuesday meeting to January fifth. So. It's like we, you know. You know, just, just to inform you that, because otherwise we'd not be able to have a, a council meeting, so. Meeting, meeting will be on January fifth this next year. First one in January twenty-sixth, um, there's, I, I like to recognize all the veterans, I missed it last month. Sometimes it did happen, you get one meeting a month and I always get a chance to, so I'd like to acknowledge anybody who's a veteran. Please, uh, raise your hands, stand. There you go. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to point out that the, the, uh, Wham Witter workshop is February eleventh through the thirteenth in Cheyenne, so if you're. Interested in going, please let Arvo know, so he can register you. The Tower Valley, um, Business Association meeting will be. Uh, December thirtieth, eight AM, eight AM here in Town Hall, um, we're trying to get that off the ground, um. And Christmas bizarre, Seattle will be there. It's, uh, Saturday eight to two with lunch at eleven. Uh, so, that's all I have, uh. Will is gone for the engineer's report to attend a. A family function. Uh, basically we've tied up the TR pathway, finishing out the paperwork on that, it's moving along, um. The water line is basically in hibernation for the next couple of months. Uh, we'll do some electrical work over there, we'll get our generators. Um. And our RFP for the, uh, alternative water source has been out. We, the deadline is, uh, December eighteenth for the. Uh, submissions, I'll reveal, and if we have, if necessary, we'll have interviews with an award on the January. Uh, meeting, January fifth. Um. Stone, Stone Ridge Meadows Phase Three subdivision, what we're, did the walkthrough, they're working on completing the punch list over there. Um. Marshall's report, Spencer?
Mayor, Council. Thank you guys for your, your time, I will. Do my best to be brief with this, I know it's, uh, been a long meeting. Um, real quick, start out with, I want to thank the Sheridan County Sheriff's Office and the Wyoming Highway Patrol, um. During this last month, I did assist them, but they've also done a lot. We, we worked well cooperation, uh, been out on Highway Patrol, a few different calls, including a stolen vehicle out of Sheridan. That was crashed a short distance from Ranchester. Um, Deputy Brothers was over with his K nine and we were able to just track where the driver went. Give some extra information, see if they dropped anything evidentiary, um. You know, it's kind of nice to at least give them a little bit of extra information, work with them. Uh, in return, I was on a traffic stop in town just recently, uh, had a lot of violations going on and. Look over my shoulder as a trooper stopping to back me up and. Look over my shoulder, there's a trooper stopping to back me up and, and he was on his way home. He had a long day, but uh. You know, he didn't, he didn't drive on past. He he got out, stopped, um, made sure everything was good and got out for any assistance. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate the Sheridan County Sheriff's Office taking all the calls in the town when I'm not working. To talk about that a little bit, I. Have continued to vary my days of work, my my hours. So some of you guys saw me working on Sunday. Sunday night, after dark. That's that's why holidays. Um, we get holidays off in town, but I I just. Um, after doing this for for so long. Yeah, I I guess it just doesn't uh doesn't feel right to not put on the uniform and and go out and. And serve the the community even very most times. So, um, done that. We completed our purchase of the Gillette uh canine vehicle for ten dollars. Met with the police chief yesterday uh over in Gillette. He left a lot of great equipment in that vehicle, uh, the the radar equipment, the computer equipment, the computer dock. Uh, all the canine heat alarm equipment, canine uh stuff. There's. A lot of. Great things in the vehicle. Um, and the vehicle's got a lot of life left in it, too. It's it's got about eighty thousand miles on it, but um. You know, it was an in-town vehicle. It's not quite like patrol. Those guys kind of drive the wheels off things. Um. For me, it was a busy month, busiest thing. I've talked about the last couple of meetings was just trying to get abandoned vehicles. Unregistered vehicles, junk vehicles off the street. I left notices on twenty-three different vehicles. Most of them are. Are gone, so that that took a lot of my time. A couple of other things I just want to touch on. The ordinance that passed tonight, camping ordinance, there is a provision, an exception in there. For medical emergencies, that somebody being overly tired, unsafe to drive. You can pull over in the Tamar Anchester and rest, but that's allowed in our our ordinance of the past, so. Nobody needs to worry about that. Um. As far as parking near my my home, I just want to address that as well. And I the the big thing I want to. Put out to everyone is I have an open door policy. If anybody ever asks me questions. Just come visit with me as people in the room that know me. Um, I have no shortage of visitation comes out of me. When you you give me stops, talk to me. Uh, we'll talk here off. Apologize, I'm doing that right now. Um, but it's just, it is me. Uh, people have parked in front of my house in the past, last thing, stay in the night. That's that's always been. Not a problem. It was not a problem also when that individual moved over here, moved over to my house. Um. Happy to see him find some shade. But unfortunately, I never had a chance to talk to, pulled up in front of my house, saw that he was also along my my yard and uh. Circled around, dropped the kiddo off into the the house. He wanted to eat his school lunch. He didn't finish. And when I circled back around to to talk to him and let him know he was welcome there, he was gone. So, um, anybody. Ever has any questions about anything like that, please just feel free to come, talk to me, ask me. I'll tell you straight, straight up. So with that, does anybody have any? Questions for me?
Did you say you bought the vehicle for ten dollars?
Yes, we bought the vehicle for ten dollars. I think Gillette, well, Gillette. Um, they're talking to the chief. They they create a lot of work for themselves by selling it for ten dollars. They do a lot of of. Extra legwork. They had to advertise that they were selling it. They had to, you know, talk about it at a council meeting and all the things. Um, but it's just, it would have been a lot easier for them to donate it, but they they just wanted to get it out there. That's the way they do things. So. I don't know who picked the ten dollar amount, but uh I think it was the city administrator. That was their, that was their amount. So. Um, it's it's a great, great looking vehicle. Happy that we could add that. It does have, it's got graphics on it. Um. It looks great. Uh, we'll get it over here soon, as soon as I can. I would, I had a write over to Gillette tonight, but we had this meeting. Otherwise, I would be driving it back to Gillette.
Is it black?
So it is black. It's black. It's a Ford Explorer and it has very similar decals to my truck, so it should be very easily recognizable. Same color scheme, same mountain scene. Uh, didn't have, it's smaller, so we didn't have enough room to fit as much on there. And it's also reflective, so uh, you know, sometimes we go out and assist at night and, you know, highway safety is. Super important. We've gotten called out to just kind of keep the scene safe for highway patrol. Um, you know, and that's why we thought the reflective would be be nice.
How many calls did you have this month?
Uh, total. I don't know, approximately between twenty-five and thirty calls. I I complete my reports a week in advance, so it's based off of a an estimation. But yeah, if anybody has any specific questions like that, please bring my office, I can do. We'll bring any of that data up.
Anything, anything else for Spencer? Thank you, Spencer.
Yeah.
Uh, special committee reports, uh, Tamar Natural Gas. Uh, next meeting is December eighteenth, four PM here at Town Hall. Fire District, any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Chief, and Fire District. Uh, just want to go through uh my reports. We had a light month last month, nine calls in total. Um, average response time was about thirteen and a half minutes. See, one of the notable things. So that's twenty-one folks on the roster. Uh, we did our cocaine training. Uh, didn't have any training or certificates handed up this time. We did replace uh an alternator and a couple batteries on one of our trucks. Uh, let's see, I do have a request for the town just to consider where the fire board could. Um, they're going to change it out the keypad for the doors to make it so there's individual codes that reach fall up here. That way I know that was coming and going. Uh, for more membership and a new piece of equipment in the garage. I want to do that. Uh, we participated in community events. We escorted a state volleyball team. They didn't win it safe, but we escorted them there, so we were hoping they would. We will be in the parade of lights. Uh, we've also been asked to be road guard for that event, so we'll have trucks staged. The road guard, Highway fourteen, and then uh everyone will get to see a brand new fire truck. In the parade lights, we'll decorate it up. They've uh missed me, but I should play Santa on the truck. I don't know if I can beat the mayor. Yeah, I'm a super higher. The only thing I want to say, and Kathy brought this up, you know, things that people don't know that happened in the background. Obviously, everyone had. Uh, participated in the power outage, whether they wanted to or not. But in the background, uh, all of the EMS, sheriffs, police departments, highway patrol. Fire departments, we all participated and perhaps for the worst on everyone's behalf. And then after that was done and the power came on. Everything settled, uh, we participated in an app reaction review. What worked, what didn't work, what should we do that's better? So. You know, when the power outage happens, people not be able to get food, but they won't have heat, don't know how long. Your EMS personnel, countywide, were working for the folks here to make sure that we're safe. That's all I got. Stand for more questions.
I think your event went well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we 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 had it a bit. We have press there. We had spigot areas when the truck arrived, so just really. Excited to get it on board. I do have one final payment of forty thousand dollars to make. I need to get a state MRG program to draft a request for that payment, so I can't get title of the vehicle until I make that final. Payment on the front. So it'll be a couple of weeks before we get it serviced, but we're looking forward to doing that.
It's beautiful, Charlie.
Thank you very much. Uh, planning commission. Helps, some help dates, okay. For the treasures report.
She's made we made a couple of transfers. They're just the normal ones. We moved. Coming into Northern Underground as a strong account. And and money out of it, still a general fund. But changes outside of the bills.
Making motion to approve the treasures report, S P Z.
That's it.
My Jessica's saying by Pamian to approve the treasures report as presented, is there any? Comments, any comments? All in favor of approving the treasure report? Say aye. Uh, all opposed? Same time? Mr. Carries, approval of the warrants?
I'll make a motion to pay the warrants in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. I'll second.
My Jessica's saying by Amber to approve the warrants. Any discussions? Any discussions?
Well, we started this making amendments to take things off and vote twice, so. Uh, I'd like to take off the tires and uh money there. You might not believe it, but I really don't support that. All of the boost stuff, there's like four or five of them. I don't believe you're going to be involved with that. Our marshal said that the dog was free and last month there was a charge and this month there's three more. So then I say and then I. The banquet deal, the banner for eight hundred dollars. The the business deal, we should supply a building for if they want to get together, but we should be spending taxpayer money on that. You'll find a thousand there for the other banquet deal. Take that off and and then, um. I guess I'll leave it at that. We voted on that and then vote on the rest of it.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment? Second. During none, amendment says. Right on the second. All in favor, affirmative warrants as presented, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of payroll.
Making motion to pay payroll in the amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and one cent.
I submit.
My Jessica's saying we're mad to approve payroll. Any discussion? Any discussion? Carry none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same time? Motion carries. Do you have agenda items? Anybody from the future agenda? Um. Very none. Um, I'd just like to say, well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Hanza. Festus for the rest of us and all that good stuff, because I hope to see you for next year. Um, so nothing else on the agenda. Um, I'm. This meeting is adjourned.